Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, May the 14th, 2024. It's 9:00 a.m., and we're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Grandberry, Texas. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's a regular Commissioners' Court meeting of Hood County, Texas. Today, we are fortunate to have with us the Reverend Terry Louven of the ministry, All Things New, to give us the invocation.
Heavenly gracious Father, Lord, we give you thanks for who it is that you are and how it is that you have blessed our lives and are blessing our lives. Lord, I pray for your presence here this morning in this room to be with the men and the women in the positions that you've placed them, to give them knowledge and the wisdom to use that knowledge. Pray, Lord, for your Holy Spirit to hover in this room, to guide, guard, and direct our words and our thoughts, so that everything honors and glorifies you. We pray for our first responders, our law enforcement and fire and emergency response personnel. Around them, Lord, build a hedge of protection to keep them safe as they serve us and serve this great community and county. Lord, but most of all, we thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, who died in our place, took our sin, and gave us your promise of life everlasting in your presence. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge to the United States. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now a pledge to the great state of Texas. Honor Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Now, we have some special presentations and a very important deal in the history of Hood County. We have the Honorable Richard Haddix here with us this morning to swear in our new county clerk, Christine Leffwitch. Let's give her a round of applause.
Stand right here in front of me. I, Christine Leffwitch...
I, Christine Leffwitch...
...do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute...
That do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute...
...the duties of the office of Hood County Clerk...
The duties of the office of Hood County Clerk...
...of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas...
...and will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability...
...preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution...
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution...
...and the laws of the United States...
And the laws of the United States...
...and of this great state...
And of this great state...
So help me God...
So help me God...
And I furthermore solemnly swear or affirm...
And I furthermore solemnly swear or affirm...
...that I have not directly nor indirectly paid...
That I have not directly nor indirectly paid...
Offered or promised to pay...
Offered or promised to pay...
Contributed or promised to contribute...
Contributed or promised to contribute...
Any money or thing of value...
Any money or thing of value...
Or promised any public office...
Or promised any public office...
Or employment...
Or employment...
For the giving or withholding of a vote...
For the giving or withholding of a vote...
Or, I'm sorry, at the election at which I was elected...
At the election at which I was elected...
Or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation...
Or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation...
Whichever the case may be...
Whichever the case may be...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Ms. Leffwitch, may God bless your service to the county.
Thank you, Judge Haddix. Okay. And the next thing, we have a proclamation to designate May 27, 2024, as a day to honor our fallen military heroes. I can see that. Well, we got Memorial Day up here. Everybody? And reading this proclamation, I mean, we got Mr. Law Fisher here. Are you?
I'm good. Thank you, Judge.
Good. Kathy, do you want to come up here? Well, I got, we got another one for y'all.
Yes, we're...
Next one. Okay, we have two this morning, and they rightly deserve it, so. Let me see if I can get this up. Of course, y'all know who this lady is, don't ya? We don't see her on jury. You want to read this, or do you want...
I can't see. Remember someone.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I can't see. I can't read.
I'll go get it.
Sorry.
All right, I'll read it. It exists in official proclamation to designate May 27, 2024, as a day to honor our fallen military heroes. Whereas Memorial Day was dedicated on July 1st, 2017, as a site to remember and honor all those who served as firefighter, law enforcement officer, or military. Within each site is a place to honor those fallen heroes who have given the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas Memorial Day is our nation's solemn reminder that freedom is never free, this day is to reflect the noble sacrifices of those who gave the last measure of devotion in service of our ideas and the defense of our nation. And whereas friends of Memorial Day have joined together and planned this Memorial Day ceremony to honor and recognize all of our fallen military members on May 27, 2024, at the Jim Burks Firefighters Memorial Park located in Grandberry, Texas, beginning at 8:30 a.m. And whereas, now therefore, the Hood County Commissioners' Court is hereby paying May 27, 2024, as a day to honor our fallen military heroes. And the ceremony for Memorial Day is made happen for citizens to remember the fallen, pray for lasting peace among nations, and honor the guardians of our deniable rights. Furthermore, we call our citizens to proudly display America's flags at our homes, businesses, and in our community. In doing so, we pledge our nation's allegiance to the great halls of freedom while also paying homage to those who fought and ultimately died. Signed this 14th day of May, 2024, by all the members of the Commissioners' Board, signed by Christine Leffwitch, the county clerk. So this is an official proclamation. Y'all do a wonderful job every year, so.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to pick you up. Come on through. Move over there.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
All right. We'll see you on the...
Thank you.
We got one more up here. We got, this is a very special proclamation that I'll just hand to you at your office. Senator Burwell White, Melver White. It's from the Senate of the State of Texas. Senate Proclamation Number 145. Whereas the Senate of the State of Texas is pleased to recognize the Greater Grandberry Chapter of the Military Officers Association of America, its founder, Gail Joyce, and the 12th Annual and Final Honoring Home Town Heroes and a Field of Flags Program at Memorial Field in Grandberry, which will take place during the 2024 Memorial Day weekend. And whereas for more than a decade, the Greater Grandberry Chapter of the Military Officers Association of America has honored our nation's fallen military service members and commemorated the heroes who gave their lives to protect the United States. And whereas honoring hometown heroes and a field of flags will provide attendees with the opportunity to acknowledge and pay tribute to those who sacrificed their lives in service to our country. And whereas inspired from the sacrifices of her husband, Larry Joyce, and her younger son, James Casey Joyce, Gold Star wife and mother, Gail Joyce, founded Honoring Home Town Heroes and a Field of Flags to commemorate the brave work of our courageous predecessors, Gail has heartlessly voted herself to honor our esteemed troops, and this will be her final year leading the event. And whereas our nation's military service members are truly deserving of special recognition for their patriotism and selfless service, and their terrorism will be remembered with respect and gratitude by their fellow Americans, now therefore, be in complaint that the Senate of the State of Texas hereby recognize the Greater Grandberry Chapter of the Military Officers Association of America and Gold Star wife and mother, Gail Joyce, and extend best wishes to the attendees of the 12th Annual Honoring Home Town Heroes and a Field of Flags Program during this time of remembrance. And be in further complaint that the topic of this proclamation be prepared in honor of this special intention. And signed by Texas Senator Brian Burwell and is certified by Patty Paul, Secretary of the Senate. Very, very nice and a very worthy reward. Let's give Gail Joyce...
(applause) Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Hope to see you all there.
Do you want to say a few, go say a few words to everybody?
Well, just hope to see you. I hope you guys are sending really, really special this year. It'll be my year on that field. It'll be my last year to be really involved. And I want to thank you as a community because what's going on with the kind of political committee has turned up in a huge community. Thanks to all of you. See you guys.
Thank you. Okay. No service awards, Ms. Welber? Okay. Next, we get into the program about citizens' comments at large. And I remind everybody that if you want to speak on any, is you got another one? These are at large. If you want to speak on any agenda item, you must fill out a public participation form first and turn it in to the sheriff, and the sheriff will then give it to the county clerk, and the county clerk will put it in line up here. So we have four open mic questions. Is that correct? Okay. And the first one is Cheryl Shaden to speak at the open mic.
Good morning. So I want to have a little talk. Say, you go get gas. $3.70 a gallon, Judge Massengill. You fill your truck up. I decide I'm going to come along and I'm going to siphon all the gas out of your truck. Not only am I siphoning gas, I'm spraying all you guys with gas. I've caused some chemical burns, some respiratory problems, but it's okay. Next thing I know, one of the commissioners comes along and they offer to pay me money to stop siphoning gas out of Judge Massengill's truck. Is that okay? Sure, that's okay. Next thing I know, Judge Massengill has to go get more gas. He has to put another tank of gas in, so he's just spent twice as much money filling his truck up. Is that okay? Sure, that's okay. Last Tuesday, ERCOT gave us warnings telling us that there was going to be grid instability on Wednesday when the heat came. Now, there are 30-plus crypto mines in the state of Texas. When these crypto mines get suggested that they should power down, they sell their electricity back to the grid. Who subsidizes that? You subsidize that? You subsidize that and higher electrical bills. Is that okay? Sure, that's okay. Now, in these 30-plus crypto mines that are in the state of Texas, they cause physical harm to people, the environment, wildlife, property value loss. Is that okay? Sure, that's okay. Our elected officials could be sending letters to senators, state reps, Texas legislation, U.S. legislation, asking for some change, some rules and regulations, some change in legislation to protect the community. Are they? Are you okay with that?
The next speaker... Next speaker is John Highsmith.
Good morning. I'm John Highsmith. I live in Pecan Plantation, and I'm here really as a follow-up to my comments made to the court in early February. And it's about Bitcoin mining noise, and I just want to let you know, I think you know this, that nothing's happened with this noise. It's louder than ever. I mean, it's, there's been no decrease in the noise levels. And when I talked in February, one of the things that came up was the amount of tax money received from Marathon Digital. So I thought, well, you know, I wonder how much tax money is derived from Pecan Plantation? So I did some calculations. And just from my estimates, Pecan Plantation pays about $15,872,000 a year in property taxes. Okay? Now, that's the existing Pecan Plantation. And we're adding homes. If you look at the new homes that are being added, you would come up to about $9.5 million that they'll end up paying in property taxes, because these are bigger homes, they're more expensive homes. So that's a combined total of $25,420,000 that just Pecan Plantation is paying in property tax. So I'm not understanding why the whole comment about property taxes that Marathon Digital came up, because you're not only getting property taxes from Pecan Plantation, you're getting sales taxes that are being paid. And then I now want to really get into something that really is more at the heart of the issue, and that is the pain and suffering that's still being heaped on the people of Mitchell Bend. And these are my neighbors. And my feeling is Hood County, is Marathon Digital's laughing at Hood County. I mean, they, they have done nothing about it. They hired a PR person, they're going to sponsor the fireworks display, they put some articles in the Hood County News, but why don't they just reduce the noise? That's, I really don't understand it. And what really bothers me so much is we have some cases of children suffering. There's a little girl that I talked to her mother. She'd taken the child to the doctor in the last year, seven times, for her ears. And then they ended up having to do surgery. And what the doctor said was, yes, the low-level constant noise, judging by what area of the ear was damaged, that's most likely what caused it. So this isn't a hearsay thing. I talked to the mother directly. I have no doubt that's true. They live about a mile from this thing. And I really asked a question, and I have other cases, but I thought I just want to highlight one because my time's limited. But what I like to ask this court is, you need to increase the level of concern about this issue. People truly are being hurt, and it's through no fault of their own. And there's a resident of Mitchell Bend who said it very well. He said, well, you know, the people of Mitchell Bend, they're criminals. They have committed a crime, and their crime is poverty. And I believe that's why they're not being heard, and I think they need to be heard. And I would ask this court, I know by the law you can't do something specific to say "stop it," but you can certainly issue declarations, you can certainly come out with positions on where this court stands, you can certainly make it clear to Marathon Digital and Constellation Energy that this is intolerable, they must stop this. And they need to hear that loud and clear. Thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Davis.
I'm Davis.
Next speaker is Dr. Granik.
Yes.
He's okay. All right. So that ends the citizens' comments at large. Did anybody sign up in this? Did you fill out one, sir?
Yes.
Well, come on up and speak. I don't have it, but I got a 400 of them here. Maybe you turn it.
This is...
No, that's 12.
Your sheet says 12. Or do you want to come to public comments at large?
Oh, no, I was on 12. I'm sorry. I'm up here at the wrong time, aren't I?
Okay. All right. This is on open mic, comments at large. All right. Okay. So that brings us to miscellaneous then. And if you want to speak on any agenda item, again, you have to fill out a public participation form prior to calling that agenda item. All right. So number one, consider and take appropriate action to transfer $70,000 from contingency to account 010-5430-49500 on insurance. Yes, sir?
Judge...
Got the Fire Marshal here today with you.
So basically what this is, we're changing our due date. Like I brought it to the court's attention last October, it was right after the budget started, and with the increase in vehicle insurance, it was more than the amount that I had requested. So in order to not have to come to the court after the budget has been approved, I took action to try to change our due date from October to closer to the middle of the year so that when it comes time for budget hearing, I actually know that I'm asking for what I need and not taking a guess. So this past year, what we did is we had them short-term the policy. So I paid half of the year's vehicle premium insurance off of the approved budget for last year, and now I'm having to pay a full year from now until next May or June, whenever it is. So basically what this is, is to bring us up to speed for the half a year that I've already paid for, and all this is really is just changing the due date on the premiums.
Okay. That makes good sense.
I hope so.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to transfer $70,000 from contingency to account 10-5430-49500 insurance.
Second.
A motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to transfer $70,000 from contingency to account 010-5430-49500 insurance, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jeff Young. Okay. The next item, discuss and take appropriate action to allow the county judge to sign the subscription services agreement and order form with Leads Online. Sheriff Deeds and Gary Roberts.
Gary's the expert on what all is available through Leads Online. The county's been using that since 2003, and they added things to their, what they do, and so they finally put out another contract that they want everybody to sign up for.
So we've been with Leads Online since 2003, like the sheriff said. The version of Leads Online that we're using, they're no longer going to support as of October 2024. They're forcing us to upgrade. They have several different packages. We've chosen a package at a price point that best represents the things that we will use Leads Online for, largely as a tool to use to search for stolen property in pawn shop databases or to look at a citizen's history that may be a suspect in one of our crimes. Leads Online does do some other things now, but we have other software that does those things, that are more efficient and offers a better product. So in effort to not have any redundancy in the tools that we're using, we selected a package at a price point that would still allow us to function. We've been having success with Leads Online catching a lot of criminals. We just don't want to have that break in service. Leads Online has agreed that if we can get a contract signed now, they go ahead and turn on the new features or the new software for us now, but we won't be paying until October. So they're doing that for us. That's why we went ahead and brought it to court now, knowing that come October, we're going to have to get it approved, so.
And this is 17-month? It goes from now until the end, until our budget year 2025? So this will be...
Yes, ma'am. Well, they're not charging us till October. They'll go ahead and give it to us now, but they're not going to charge us until October.
Yeah. So this will take us through...
Twenty years.
Yeah, this will take us through a 17-month period through September of 2025.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Is a move that we allow the county judge to sign the subscription services agreement and order form with Leads Online.
Do I hear a second? Second.
A motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to allow the county judge to sign the subscription services agreement and order form with Leads Online, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion?
Just one comment, and this is a total of $6,702, correct?
I believe so. Yes.
And it's coming from...
Count.
5640-48840 is what I received from the county auditor.
Is that correct? Yes, okay.
Thank you.
All those, any further questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is item number three. Discuss and take appropriate action to adopt a budget application procedure to require nonprofit organizations requesting funding through the Hood County budget to submit below information. Nonprofit organizations in a contractual agreement with Hood County that covers an annual subsidy and associated responsibilities are exempt from this procedure. And then it lists, A, certificate of good standing from the state of Texas, B, last audited financial statement, C, most current financial statement, D, budget report showing actual receipts and expenses for the last 12-month period, E, liquidity calculated as cash on hand divided by average monthly expenses, F, program expenses as a percentage of total expenses, G, cash flow from operations. And I have a total of 10 people that have signed up to speak on this topic, and the rules of the Commissioners' Court allow a maximum of 30 minutes per agenda item, so each participant will have three minutes to speak. And the first speaker is Trish Burwell.
I'm going to go ahead and introduce why I put this on the agenda, if I could do that first.
Yeah, okay, Trish.
So, yeah. So last year during the budget process, I received quite a bit of feedback when we got to the budget hearing specifically when we were discussing the general fund budget 6,400 public assistance. The feedback I received last year was along the lines of, so people just come up and ask for money and don't even ask, you don't ask them for a financial statement, you don't ask them for what other sources of income there are, why do you not vet, there's no vetting of this? And so when I looked back and I saw what we... annual subsidy and associated responsibilities are exempt from this procedure. And then it lists, A, certificate of good standing from the state of Texas, B, last audited financial statement, C, most current financial statement, D, budget reports showing actual receipts and expenses for the last 12-month period, E, liquidity calculated as cash on hand divided by average monthly expenses, F, program expenses as a percentage of total expenses, G, cash flow from operations. And I have a total of 10 people that have signed up to speak on this topic, and the rules of the commissioners' court allow a maximum of 30 minutes per agenda item, so each participant will have three minutes to speak. And the first speaker is Trish Burwell.
I'm going to go ahead and introduce why I put this on the agenda, if I could do that first.
Yeah, okay, Trish.
So, yeah, so last year during the budget process, I received quite a bit of feedback when we got to the budget hearing specifically when we were discussing the general fund budget 6,400 public assistance. The feedback I received last year was along the lines of, so people just come up and ask for money and don't even ask, you don't ask them for a financial statement, you don't ask them for what other sources of income there are, why do you not vet, there's no vetting of this? And so when I looked back and I saw what we had actually put in place during the ARPA process, I thought, okay, well, here's something that we can just pull, use, something we've already built, something that was in the ARPA application process, and use that as part of our budget process when it comes to requests from the budget for non-county, not part of the county budget or not part of the county expenses, so outside of the actual county. So this budget year that we're currently in, there's approximately $170,000 allocated to various entities in that budget line. So as part of our due diligence, I'm proposing that we take this page out of the ARPA application and require additional information just to ensure that we are being good stewards of the taxpayers' money. So that's why this is here. This is the exact process that we used during the ARPA application. It's also not unusual, anytime a nonprofit is asking for a grant to provide this type of information, that's actually where I got this information, was what type of things are required when a nonprofit requests funds or is applying for a grant. So just goes along with due diligence for what we are, you know, we're the stewards of the taxpayers' money, and I think that it's a good idea that we make sure that we're being good stewards of that money. So that's why it's on here.
Okay. And with that, the first speaker is Trish Burwell.
Honorable Judge and county commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to comment on the proposed budget application procedure for non-contracted nonprofits. I'm here on behalf of the Hood County Committee on Aging and to support my fellow nonprofit organizations. As the executive director of an organization in existence since 1977, whose sole purpose is to offer a better quality of life to homebound, impoverished, and isolated seniors, there are elements in the proposed process with which I agree, and there are some that concern me. I will begin with the requests that I agree are necessary and valid. The most impactful information that proves a nonprofit is a viable and trustworthy organization is a nonprofit tax form 990. This comprehensively outlines assets, liabilities, contribution amounts, employee and operational costs, financial stability, and includes tax returns for up to five years. A third-party financial audit or review is also an excellent indication of stewardship. These are very costly, but organizations rely on these because they delve into the inner workings of the organization to ensure abuse and misappropriation of funds is absent. A certification of good standing from the state of Texas speaks volumes and states an organization is serious about its mission. These items provide the most transparent and vetted information available without violating the privacy of our clients and our donors. Any organization seeking funds is bound by ethical behavior, fiduciary responsibility, and a steadfast dedication to serving clients with respect and dignity. I personally do not take that responsibility lightly. Nonprofits who serve this community are aware of the need for plausible transparency and proof of financial stewardship that proves the organization is worthy of investment. Nonprofits are also keenly aware of our responsibility to ensure the privacy of our clients and confidentiality of our donors who wish to silently serve without fanfare. We receive donations from those who choose not to seek recognition. Many donate because they are compassionate and truly care. Many prefer to remain anonymous because they have been personally impacted by poverty, abuse, hunger, isolation, displacement, or any number of travesties that happen in life at any given moment and without warning. If community nonprofits were required to hand over boxes, and I mean boxes, of receipts with personally identifiable information to governing body that is subject to public information regulations, not only would we set ourselves up for violation of parts of the Health Information Portability and Accountability Act, but we would also violate the trust that clients and donors have put in us as charitable providers. In addition, the process would be cost prohibitive and time-consuming. Your local nonprofits serve fragile, abused, isolated, impoverished, and underprivileged community members, and I can tell you with certainty that no one serves the underserved the way nonprofits do in Hood County. We are not in this field because it pays well. We serve because we are called. We serve those who are personally and profoundly impacted by adversity, but most importantly, we serve those who served us and can no longer serve themselves. I would like to share a story with you. I do not have time. We had a Meals on Wheels client that ended up not having electricity and water, and that Meals on Wheels driver called three organizations in this community to get help. And it was not the people five or six on a dais that helps, it was boots on the grounds, it was the community members and the organizations in this community that helped that person get what that person needed. That's what we do, that's our goal, and what we need to do, I think, is abide by what you require, but those three items that I mentioned are absolutely going to be the best transparency that you have and keep our client confidentiality.
Thank you.
Could you? Trish, Trish, Trish?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Okay, so it was a tax form 990?
Yes, sir.
And then an audited financial statement?
Yes. Most organizations, some do every five years, they do a full-blown audit, which is extremely expensive. Some do a financial review yearly, and that's what I think most people do. That's what we do. We do an in-depth financial audit, because again, it's very costly, stewardship, we want to make sure we're spending our money wisely. And it's, and then an annual review is in-depth, but less costly.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify, this by no means meant every, the boxes and boxes, this was the, you're probably referencing the budget report showing actual receipts. That could be one line item that summarized, not boxes and boxes of receipts. So I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't asking for that.
No, I understand that, but I mean, you know, we read what we read. And to me, that you were asking for receipts, unfortunately, most of those receipts can definitely have those identifiers on them, and we would, it would probably take us, myself personally, I have 16 staff members, seven of them are part-time, and we serve 80 meals a day and deliver, we have 250 volunteers that deliver our meals every day, five days a week. We don't have the staff to pull, you know, 200 boxes out of the alley to look those up, and that's what we would have to do, and it's cost prohibitive. We don't have the time and staff to do that.
That's not what I was asking at all. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. The rest of y'all, y'all just supporting this and agree with what she is saying? Margaret, Crystal, Ms. Bondi, all of you?
Let me, I got a question. How often do you all, are you supposed to file your 990?
Every year.
So now, most of that stuff's on your 990, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Yes, so that...
I mean, even the people that donate, unless it's anonymous, their names are on your 990, right?
I don't know that the names are on there, the amounts are on there.
Yeah, I think they are.
That would be a violation if you were to do that.
Yeah, I think they are.
They're not.
They're not?
They're not.
Huh. Okay.
There's Texas law that prohibits that being...
Would you come, Mel, could you?
Sorry, Trish.
We want to be sure you're on the record.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I just wanted to jump in here. There's Texas law, I think it's Texas Family Code 93, chapter 93, that protects those people's identity, so that is never disclosed in a 990. And depending on the amount of money that a nonprofit brings in every year will determine whether they file a full 990 or a 990 postcard. That's a $50,000 threshold. So every nonprofit, these people are all going to file a full 990.
But we're not talking about the recipients, you're talking, I'm talking about the donors. You're telling me the donors are confidential?
Absolutely, they're confidential. 100%.
So how do they take it? Oh, never mind. We'll talk about that later.
Okay, yeah. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what you're telling me is that already the information that are required that y'all turn in every year shows transparency and...
Yes, sir.
Well, at this point, nothing is being turned in, but I agree that...
Actually, that's incorrect. We did actually, with the court last year, I know that the Hood County Area Agency on Aging did turn that in to the court.
Yeah, okay, one did, but it's not something that we have as part of our budget process, which I think we should adopt as a best practice to follow the practice of what the Committee of Aging did, so.
I don't think anybody here is in disagreement with that.
Thank you.
Just particulars in violating privacy.
Yeah, and I'm sorry for the misunderstanding, but I wasn't asking for any details, just like a summary of receipts and dispersments, so.
What you already have then, based upon her explanation and what Mel Burwell just said, that's sufficient. Does the county need anything else?
Yes, we need to adopt that as a policy.
Y'all have any objection to that, what you turn into the state, what you have to file? Do you mind turning that over to the county so we can consider?
No, I've actually done it previously, or the person that was here before me did it previously. It's that the 990...
Yeah, I just want to make sure I got the three things. The tax form 990, the audited financial statement, and what was the third thing?
Would be the certificate.
Oh, I already have that on there. Okay, I circled that already.
That's okay.
All right, so, anything else?
That's it?
Well, I'm going to make the motion if everyone's ready.
Well, we got a lot more people signed up.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's really good. Let me say this, we've got nine other speakers that are signed up. Based upon what Trish Burwell said, Burwell said, and what Mel Burwell said, that I think that Commissioner Samuelson would like to shorten this down, and I think that would probably satisfy everybody else's that has signed up to speak, the other nine speakers. So let me hear what you have to say then as far as the motion is concerned.
All right. So I'll make the motion to adopt a budget application procedure to require nonprofit organizations requesting funding through the Hood County budget to submit the three below items of information. The nonprofit organizations that are in a contractual agreement with Hood County that covers an annual subsidy and associated responsibilities are exempt from this procedure. The three items requested are certificate of good standing from the state of Texas, audited financial statement, and tax form 990.
I'll second.
Should we ask if anybody wants to speak after this, just to make sure? I don't want to silence anybody, but if anybody did still want to come up and speak on this, now would be a good time?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. After hearing this revised motion here, does anybody that signed up to speak on item number three still wish to be heard? Nope? Dr. Granik?
Dr. Granik.
Okay. So do y'all, Dr. Gran, if you would like to speak?
Yes.
Okay, come on up there.
This is commissioners and judge, just to caution, the medical profession, at one point, even in my memory, people came and paid for their services and such, and then insurance became involved, and it became so complicated that the insurance intervened, and the offices, almost every office had to hire an insurance person, which increased the cost just to fill out these forms. So the caution is that we not go that route, we not make it so difficult. The remembrance is there are places, agencies that are applying for this, such as Ruth Place, which is now Ken Hill, where some of the services they do, where vaccinations have secondary benefits, so if kids get vaccinated, they don't end up in the hospital and increasing the cost to the county. So my only caution is we guard against going too far on that. You've done this by modifying that, but I think the idea of having some set of rules is good, just let's not go get too complicated.
And I think, I think we've listened and modified, so thank you.
Okay, a motion presented by Commissioner Samuelson to adopt a budget application procedure that will include the following three items. Number one, a certificate of good standing from the state of Texas. Number two, the last audited financial statement. And number three, the tax form 1099?
10, or 990.
990.
Tax form 990.
990, okay. Second, by Commissioner Andrews.
Eagle.
Eagle. Excuse me. Any further discussion, comments? If not, all those in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank everybody in the community. That's very, I think that was a very good deal.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank all of y'all. All right, item number four, discuss and take appropriate action to adopt the Hood County Fund Balance Policy. The auditor, and do you want to come up and start this off here? Nope, she doesn't. Okay. Well, let me see, nobody has signed up to speak on this item.
Oh, I think so. Tina Brown.
So Commissioner Samuelson and Commissioner Andrews are the ones that, somebody did?
Yeah.
I don't, there's plenty here, I don't...
Miscellaneous.
Tina, are you on number four?
Are you, you sign up, okay, come on up.
Yeah. You want me to go first, or, okay. All right, so the Fund Balance Policy, this is the same document that was provided to the court about three weeks ago at our last April meeting. It's now in final form. I wanted to mention that I did send a draft to Mr. Sabonis, who's the gentleman that helps us with our financial processes, bonds and things of that nature. He did provide some feedback that the policy was well-written, taking into consideration the needs and issues of the county, so different funds. Also, he said importantly, it targets a fund balance level for each fund, and specifically 35% for the general fund, which will be positively viewed by Standard and Poor's, which, as you know, that's the credit rating agency that rates our credit when we, if we were to want to issue bonds. He further mentioned that the highest credit scores are earned by issuers of debt that have a formal budget-based fund balance policy, and this results, which results in consistent balances. So today, this is, as I mentioned, this is the document that the court has had to review for about three weeks, and if there is discussion, we can obviously do that, or if you want to take the comment now, it's up to you, Judge.
Ms. Brown, do you want to comment?
I'd just like to say again, like I did at the last court, that I would prefer a six-month fund balance. We don't know what the future holds. The auditor even agreed that she thought six months was a good number, but it looked like we were talking three or four months in this document, so I'd like to hear some discussion. And the money's already in the fund balance, it's not like we're going to be taxing people more, so.
Well, I think that it does establish a policy threshold, if you will. The fund balance there is to stabilize if you're having shortcomings in the budget and, you know, if the bottom falls out of something, those funds are there that can keep you afloat for a little bit. The question is, when is enough enough and when is too much, too much? And I think that that's a policy decision where, you know, looking, looking around us, some counties do three months, some counties do six months, somewhere in there. We targeted four months, thinking that that's a pretty good, a pretty good number. If, if, if things got that bad, that you're getting that hard into things, I think that there's an anticipation that some services would have to be cut. You have some other balances in there. There are five different types of fund balances, and you have some other mechanisms in there that perhaps you've got some money set aside that you're planning on buying new, you know, new vehicles, and, well, that's not going to be earmarked for vehicles anymore, that's going to be moved over here for operations and to cover, to cover those expenses. So not only is there a little bit of contingency already rolled into the budget, but I think that this is a buffer that, and this is a little different than personal finances. We've got to, in my mind, my way of thinking, we take the least amount of tax money from the individuals as we have to have to run the county, and I think having the stabilization funds and the reasonable backing in there of four months is a very, a very good number and a good spot to be. And again, like she pointed out there, this is, all figures into our credit rating to have a policy in place.
I don't have a problem with the policy, I just, I just think six months is a better number to just, I mean, we don't know what the future holds. And look what's happened the last five years, it's been, you know, luckily, we're doing our out, but I think the... But I think the previous auditor had, I mean, I'm not sure, but what is our fund balance now? Is it four months, six months? What are we doing, I mean, what is it like today, or this week, or this month?
So, our last audited financial statement showed a fund balance of 30.7%. So, it's actually less than what they're proposing from 2022. We haven't gotten back our 2023 audited financial statement that calls out that number. But we're basically doing it now.
We're basically, I'm sorry?
We're basically at that four-month mark now.
Three to four months? Okay, I, it's just my opinion, and I think six months would be...
There are some, I'm sorry, there are some counties, like down around the Houston-Galveston area, that have higher fund balances, but that's because they're prone to hurricanes and other natural disasters. We are somewhat insulated, of course, we have tornadoes and fires. But the, like Hurricane Harvey, did, you know, so much destruction. And I think after that, there were some counties that increased their fund balance because of the natural disasters that they are subject to. But I think the best practice of, you know, three to four to five months is, is good for us. Do you have some, what was your, when you said you think that six months is better? What, what were you basing that on?
Just because, I don't know, we all need a backup. I mean, I just think if, if, we've had tornadoes here before, and we've seen what's going on in Oklahoma, the fires that we have. I mean, we could be devastated. I mean, I just, I just think six months was a better number. I mean, you're throwing out numbers, I'm going to throw out what I think.
And also, keep in mind, this is the unassigned fund balance. So, there's an opportunity, if we have funds available, to allocate to assigned fund balance, to do capital projects or purchase equipment or whatever, and we put X number of funds in there, and we end up having a disaster, those funds would be used first. The committed funds, we would, according to this policy, you would go down those funds first before you touched your unassigned. So, that would be the, the fund of last resort, so to speak. So, if there's any other funds available, those would be used. So, it does kind of make it even a bigger buffer than what the 35% is.
Right, I understand. I just, I just think six months would be a better number. It's just my opinion. Thank you.
Any other question or comment?
Yeah, I've got, so, I think four months is a little too much. But this is a policy decision. I have heard nothing in this county for the last five years, except how much we're growing. Growing, 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 building, growing. In an upward trend of growth, we don't need that kind of fund. We don't need a big fat fund balance. Fund balance is basically a savings account, the unassigned fund balance. And I don't think it's the government's duty to take more of your tax money to put it in a savings account. So, it's just a policy decision. Now, if the economy, if the economy starts heading another direction in this area, then we can, we can, this is just right now. We can revisit it, and if it needs to be tweaked next cycle, we can, if we have to take it up to six months because there's forecasts of a disaster headed our way financially, or a bad economy, or unemployment and all that kind of stuff, we can do it. But I kind of like the Davy Crockett story. The government shouldn't have one more penny than it needs to operate. So, that's my opinion, thank you. Oh, and I will say that this policy is excellent. It spells it all out. It defines, it gives you definitions. It breaks it down into the five categories of fund balance. For you, the taxpayers, to go out on the, on our website, I hope, I guess it'll be posted, and you can go see what, what the fund balance is and what it's about, and what it's, how it's defined, and what it's used for, which I think provides more transparency for you. Because I work for you guys, and I don't forget that. Thank you.
Any other question or comment?
You're out of order.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yes, Judge, I'll make the motion to adopt the Hood County Fund Balance Policy as presented today.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to adopt the Hood County Fund Balance Policy as presented, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Okay, item number five, discuss and take appropriate action to approve William Jensen as Reserve Deputy Counsel for Precinct Number Two. Okay, we have...
Constable Shirley is...
Constable Shirley, and then we got one, two, we got three people signed up to speak.
All right, so, Constable Shirley is asking the court to approve the appointment of William Jensen as Volunteer Reserve Deputy for Precinct Two. Just a little background, this is National Police Week, so I want to highlight Mr. Jensen's service. He has 24 years of law enforcement experience as a police officer, a deputy, and as a Reserve Constable for Precinct Three as well. So, thank you, Mr. Jensen, for your service.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you. In addition to being a respected business owner in our community, Mr. Jensen has repeatedly shown that he takes this community seriously. He served with both the Hood County Sheriff's Department and is the Chief Deputy of Hood County Precinct Three Constable's Office. And I would ask Commissioners to approve him today to be my Reserve Deputy as well. Thank you.
All right, we have three people that have signed up to speak. The first speaker is Michael Davis.
Now, we know Willie flipped, huh? He used to talk trash about you. He actually led a little coalition against you to say that you don't live in OTS. Forget that part? It's all over Facebook. Talked trash about you, talked trash about John Shirley. Yet, yet, you guys want to all of a sudden embrace him? You think his opinion's changed? Probably. He more of the question, that's for sure. All the, yeah, don't look at me again. I know you missed me. But, you know, all of a sudden, he flips sides, all of a sudden, oh, hey, guess what? We're going to give you a, another deputy for a precinct that's the slowest one in the county. And he wants another one? If Randy Ellis did this, you guys would lose your minds. He'd be crying police state, and wah, wah, wah. Acting, acting like the Marxist state you claim everybody else is. You know, I'm going to read something off Facebook that Willie said not long ago, five days ago, actually, says, "When you can't make them see the light, make them feel the heat." Wow, that just makes me want to deputize him, huh?
I'm making a point of order, sir. You are outside of the Code of Conduct for the...
How?
You are...
How?
You are disrespecting members of the public. And that's part of the Code of Conduct.
I'm reading what he wrote. That, those are his words.
I'm making a point of order that you are...
I'm sure you are. I'm sure you are just silenced me.
I'm not, I'm, our Code of Conduct says that you will not disrespect members of the public.
What have I done?
You've called people names. I've made a point of order.
You don't call people a name.
Is there a second?
I second that point of order. I bet you do. Since the judge isn't going to stop it.
I don't think that he's out of order.
I'm not out of order.
It is not the intention...
I hurt your feelings.
It is not, you didn't hurt my feelings, dude. It is my intention of the Commissioners' Court to provide a... demeaning of any individual, group. Neither is it the intention of the Court to allow a member of the public to insult the honesty or integrity of this Court as a body or any member of this Court, individually or collectively. Insulting, threatening language towards the Court or any person in the Court's presence, and on racial, ethnic, or gender slurs will not be tolerated. Now, if you have a specific criticism that goes to the appointment of Mr. Jensen...
I just said that. I just said that. Would you like me to repeat it? I can repeat if you'd like.
Sir, you are out of order.
You're so out of order.
I made a motion.
Willie Jensen said...
I made a motion, there's a second.
When you can make them see the light, make them feel the...
Judge, you can call a vote. I made a motion in a second.
Let me say this. I do not think that that's out of order. He's repeating what he said on the thing. That's not threatening, that's not doing anything.
He called someone a Marxist.
But be saying this, we got a motion by Commissioner Samuelson that what Michael Davis said is out of order, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. That's my discussion. I do not think that it's out of order. That's why I did not stop it. He's just repeating what Willie Jensen said on Facebook.
No, that's not it. He called someone a Marxist.
No, okay. All those in favor of the motion that Michael Davis is out of order, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So, the a's have it, three to two.
You may sit down.
You heard me.
Okay, the next speaker is Zach Maxwell.
Hello. So, you'll have to forgive me, I had two teeth removed and have stitches in the back of my mouth, so hopefully this one will be a little calmer. Good morning. Today I come to you with some reservations about the appointment of Willie Jensen to be appointed the Reserve Deputy. I have absolutely no problem with John Shirley having a Reserve Deputy. I think it's very important for his job. I think that it's important for our community for him to have the same rights that all the other constables have. It's just this particular individual draws out a lot of vitriol in our community. Though I think this decision has already been made, I'm compelled to speak out, hoping our voices can still resonate within these walls. Our concerns are not just grievances. They are pleas for leadership that cherish justice over factionalism. The role of a deputy, reserve or otherwise, is pivotal and should transcend mere titles or status. Unfortunately, Mr. Jensen, Mr. Jensen rallies profound questions, not about political affiliations, as corruption knows no political ideology or tribe, but about his acknowledged approach in instigating intentional chaos within our community. And he's done that many times, at events, online mostly. Though I do appreciate his past service, I think times do change, and I think people do change, and I don't think that he's changed for the better. And I think that if this was a few years ago, perhaps, maybe I'd have a different tone about it. But I don't think that he is the appropriate person in this time. But such actions are not conducive to the responsibilities to upholding peace and fostering trust in law enforcement. Moreover, I urge each of you to consider the broader impact of this appointment at a time when our country, our county stands at a crossroads. The question we must ask ourselves is fundamental. Will appointing Mr. Jensen unite, or only deepen the divides? A decision of this nature should, should bridge gaps, not widen them, promoting cohesion within our community, not conflict. In conclusion, a government position, especially in law enforcement, should not be a pedestal for personal gain, but a platform for service and sacrifice. This appointment, as it stands, seems to diverge from this path. Let us not seek to fill such a role as a means to endorse credibility at taxpayers' expense. Let us choose leaders who embody the spirit of service, who act with common good as their guiding principle. Let this decision reflect not just the will of the few, but the needs of the many in Hood County. Thank you for allowing me this time to express my concerns, and I hope that you remember that the left doesn't have exclusivity on corruption and abusing police power. Thank you.
We have one more speaker, Tina Brown.
Just to clarify, this position is volunteer. It's not taxpayer dollars. Just wanted to clarify that.
If I may? I have one more minute, I have just a minute. I understand that it's volunteer and it's not for pay, but it's a position within the county that does give credibility. And I think that us endorsing the type of behavior that Mr. Jensen has exuded, again, I've been on both sides of Mr. Jensen's wrath. I've been in favor of it, and I've been opposed to it. And to be quite frank, I regret some of the decisions that I have been in favor of in the past for Mr. Jensen's actions and how he has gone about doing it, not necessarily the underlying policy positions, but the approach and how it's done. And I regret promoting such vitriol, but in, even in such a limited capacity. But I just letting you know that it, I understand it's volunteer, but it's endorsing that behavior, and I don't think that's going to help.
Yeah, I wasn't really responding to your time. I just wanted to make sure the rest of the people that are here realize that it's a volunteer position. I didn't mention that in the opening, so.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, the next speaker is Tina Davis, I mean Tina Brown, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, so, even though it's a volunteer position, what is the cost to the county? What do we have to, do we, uniforms, ammo, a car? Is there any? He provides all, all of his needs by himself.
Constable Shirley, do you want to address that? And while you're...
We'll stop her time.
Does the court have a question for me?
Tina, Ms. Brown did.
Okay.
She wanted to know what, this is a volunteer position, so it's not, he's not on the payroll.
The expenses in the county would be a bond, maybe some uniforms and some training. A lot of those, we get at a reduced price as well.
And there's other, so, how many volunteer reserve constables do we have?
This would be three for my office.
I mean, for the entire county.
Oh, I have, Reserve Deputies?
Yeah.
I have no, I have no idea. You'd have to ask the other offices.
Okay.
So, my question has no answer. We don't know how much it's going to cost the county.
It's a bond and...
Okay, give me a round figure. $1,000, $5,000?
$200.
Okay, uniforms, ammo, do we provide him a vehicle?
It's all part of his current budget. There's no additional chart, there's no addition to his budget.
He has room in his budget for all of those things?
He has a supply budget that he will have to take this out of, yes. There's no addition to the budget.
Okay, then it sounds like he got too much money in his budget. He's got all this extra money at this end of the budget year. Also, I didn't know he was a previous deputy, so why did he leave there? Do we know that?
You'd have to ask him.
What, you're, you're going to appoint somebody and you don't know why? He was here before, and now he's not?
He served under Constable Jividen, and when she left office, he was no longer down there.
I thought he said Ellis.
No, Jividen. Constable Three, I did say Constable Three, but it was prior to Mr. Ellis, yes. It was the prior Constable. Constable Kathy Jividen.
Uh-huh.
So...
Okay, so we don't know why he left?
This is an appointment, this is the elected official making this recommendation.
I know, but you're going to, you're going to vote yes or no. He didn't get to make that decision. So, have you, like, vetted him? You know, like, do you know why he's no longer with the county in any kind of capacity? You haven't, obviously. So, another thing, does he already have his law enforcement credentials? Because that's another cost.
Yes, ma'am, he does.
He does? Okay, and I pulled up...
As I said, he's a 24, he's been, was a police officer for 24 years and a deputy constable.
I know, but don't you have to update those?
Yes, his TCO qualification.
And now that isn't, okay.
Yes. Just a question.
It is not at all uncommon for somebody in law en... It is not at all uncommon for somebody in law enforcement to reserve volunteer with an agency in order to maintain those certifications. And that is, that's what's going on here. This is somebody that's, you know, got a 24-year career without.
Oh, I understand. I'm just making sure that those K's are crossed and those I's are dotted.
Yes, ma'am.
I also pulled up the statute, and it says that elected constable who desires to appoint a deputy must apply in writing to the Commissioner's Court. Did he do that? Did?
It's on the agenda, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
That's in writing.
Okay.
That's not in accordance with.
Now, it says he must apply in writing to the court. Did that happen? It does, I mean, he talked to you and you put it on the agenda, but did he?
He sent it in writing to me, yes.
Okay. So, that sounds like it didn't happen either. And then, he has to show that it's necessary to appoint another. Does he have the workload? Is it necessary? He already has two. Is it necessary?
They're not full-time.
I know. I mean, Mark does a lot. I read his stuff all the time. So, is it necessary? I'm not sure it's necessary.
The man that's elected in that position by his constituents says that it's necessary. It's a free volunteer position, and this is not okay to come in here and use the strong arm of the government over somebody that you don't like. This is not okay.
I hate to say one word about Willie Jensen, and how do you know I don't like him?
It's pretty obvious, Dean. I think that you've made some assumptions yourself.
It's obvious, it's obvious you've been talking about Mr. Wilson.
I want to call a point of order, you're like calling me a liar.
Out of order. That's, that's.
This is ridiculous. I am going by statute, and you are not.
She said that he turned in something to her.
Not to the court? Where's the application? The application? Where's the application? It says right here, there has to be an application. Did you read this? Do you know what rules are that you're not following?
I'm ready to move on if y'all are.
Well.
Make the.
That.
So, we're just not going to follow Texas state rules here? Is that right?
Yeah. Matt, do you want to, do you have anything to say here?
Thank you.
Right. Okay, so I don't really know why this needs to be an agenda item, actually. She's looking at eighty-six point oh one one. This is under eighty-six point oh one two. So, to appoint a deputy constable, you have to follow all those steps and stuff. So, that's to have a regular, like a paid deputy constable, right? And you'd have to put it in writing, show it's a necessity and all that stuff. Under eighty-six point oh one two, the Commissioner's Court may authorize having reserve deputy constables, and they may limit the number of deputy constables that a constable may appoint. So, if you want to say across the board, you get two constable reserve deputies, you get two, you get three, you get one, whatever, y'all can make that decision. But within that, if he is allowed three or unlimited, I don't see how you have any authority to say, well, you do or do not get to put Willie Jensen in there. Just like you can tell me how many clerks I can have in my office, but you can't tell me who I hire as a clerk. And so, you can, I mean, I understand if there's a cost of bonds and equipment and that kind of thing, if you say, look, two is the max. We're doing two for everybody. Y'all can do that, but I don't think the rest of this is even appropriate or valid, and the part about the application and the necessity is for eighty-six oh one one, not eighty-six oh one two.
Right. I'm going to clarify that it was Constable Shirley that sent me the request in writing, and I have had multiple conversations with Mr. Jensen.
And apparently, we don't even need to have this as an agenda item.
I don't, I mean, what it invites is, you know, this very kind of thing, well, I don't like him, or I do like him, or whatever. I mean, I think that what y'all have the authority to do for reserve deputy constables is cap the number.
And we do that by the budget.
Well, or, sort of, but I mean, you could policy-wise say, look, y'all don't need more than two or three, or pick the number, and you can just say, across the board for everybody, you get two, you get three, and that's it. And then they appoint, and I don't know why it needs to be up for discussion on the agenda.
And we haven't, we don't have that policy at this current time.
Okay. I mean, I would recommend it because, you know, if somebody brings ten deputy constables, reserve deputies, I mean, is that too much when you're paying for equipment and whatnot? I don't know.
Their budget should not allow for that.
Okay. Well, but I mean, that's, that's the policy decision that I think y'all need to make, not whether this particular individual is a good fit or not a good fit.
Right.
I agree a hundred percent with you. I don't see our role in looking over the shoulder of an elected official and telling them who they can have fill positions in their office. I'm not going to do that with the sheriff, I'm not going to do it with you. It's not our position to tell you who to hire and who not to hire.
Right, this elected official is.
Yeah, this is, I agree with you, this is a hundred percent out of line.
So, with that, if we don't need to take any action, and Constable Shirley is, has it within his budget and authority to hire a deputy constable, then I don't think we need any action.
Are you pulling it from the agenda?
Well.
Well, I don't, I want to make it clear that I'm not pulling the appointment. Constable Shirley is.
I'm not, I'm just saying, based upon what the county attorney just said, he's saying that it's not up to the Commissioner's Court to decide who Constable Shirley appoints as his reserve deputy, that it's not within the purview of the Commissioner's Court.
There's nothing for us to do. Right. So, I will, I will pull this agenda item.
Okay, so, item number five is pulled from the agenda, and no action is taken by this Commissioner's Court in that regard.
That's true.
Okay. Good. All right. Item number six, discuss and consider for approval the funding request of fifty thousand dollars, the total for both fiscal years 2024 and 2025, to Hood County Clean Air Coalition. And I see Miss Sweet Michelle up here, can't wait to ask us for, and our esteemed president here, El Presidente. So, welcome, both of you.
Thank you very much, Judge and Commissioners. I've got with me our Board Chairman, Mark Franco, and our new Board Member, City Council Person from Cresson, Lisa Clement.
Yeah. Speak up into the microphone.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
And, and so, we appreciate you hearing us, and of course, Judge Massengill is also on our Board for the Clean Air Coalition. I do want to just state that the Hood County Clean Air Coalition oversees air quality planning for Hood County to address ozone air pollution in the county. The administrative costs for the Coalition have been paid for with grants from TCEQ's Rider Seven Grant, as well as supportive funding from Hood County, the City of Granbury, and the City of Cresson over the last biennium. The Rider Seven Grant is now under the administration of the North Central Texas Council of Governments after Hunt County was added to the Rider Seven program. For this upcoming, for the current 2024-2025 biennium, Nick Cog has requested that Hunt County allow the full funding to be used in Hood County, as our ozone values have been high the last two years, and our current design value at the Hood County Monitor is over the seventy parts per billion ozone standard. The high ozone values put the county at greater risk of being designated nonattainment for the ozone standard. Nick Cog has proposed providing about twenty-eight thousand dollars for this biennium to support the Coalition air quality planning efforts. Funding has been received in fiscal year 2024 from the City of Granbury and the City of Cresson, and additional funding will be requested for fiscal year 2025. The Coalition is requesting Hood County match the funding from the City of Granbury in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for each year in the biennium 2024 and 2025, for a total of fifty thousand dollars. The Coalition's administrative costs are about seventy-two thousand dollars per year. Rider Seven projects for the biennium include a new emission inventory to include an analysis of the emissions related to the proposed new power plant at Wolf Hollow, as well as a monitoring project to measure nitrogen oxide emissions and ozone levels around the county to help identify areas of transportive emissions that contribute to ozone formation. So, I am open to any questions that you may have.
And we, this impacts the county in a lot of ways. If we fall out of.
Out of attainment.
Yeah, attainment, then it, the license fees and everything else, it really has a detrimental effect upon the county. This is really important, and we have been paying our twenty-five thousand dollars a year, along with the city as well. You have that within the budget to pay us, and you'd rather do it by the year rather than the fifty thousand? You and I have had this discussion prior to this.
That was my question as well, is we should do it by the budget year.
Yeah. So, we kind of got it budgeted for the twenty-five thousand per year, but not all that fifty thousand. I don't know how the city's doing it on the thing, but you both agree with that, that we do need the funding to really keep us in attainment. This is, I sat on this board and I just cringe, it's not Hood County that is the contaminant, it's what we get from Dallas and Fort Worth, and the wind blows it in, but we get penalized all the same.
So, how do we, how we, we can't control what is happening, and, I mean, Weatherford, I mean, Weatherford is growing like crazy too, so now it's coming from three sides. So, what is it that we can do to control it?
Basically, we use our funds to monitor what's going on and to look for areas of issue, and document that we're being affected by the transport of these emissions from other areas.
Okay. And you mentioned Wolf Hollow, there's a hearing coming up about that, are you planning to be there?
We're, yes. And we've, we're waiting for the next comment period to open up, so that we're able to submit comments as well to TCEQ about that permit.
They're doubling their capacity, which will, and the stacks, Mr. Highsmith is in the audience, he knows a lot about this, you might want to, you guys might want to connect. The stacks are too low, which is causing the, I'm not, Mr. Highsmith, you probably should answer, talk about this much better than I can, but about the height of the stacks at Wolf Hollow and what that does with the emissions.
That I can't speak to, but.
What was that?
It affects the dispersion.
It affects the dispersion, so you might want to, you guys might want to talk afterwards, and he knows a lot about that too. So, there's not, other than monitoring it, what else is it that you do with the money?
We're encouraging, I mean, our funding from the Rider Seven only allows projects of emission inventory work and monitoring work. That's from the state of Texas, for the state legislature's description of what the Rider Seven Grant can be used for. We do try to do some public outreach, basically on social media, because we don't have a budget for, for doing any other public outreach, and just encouraging people and identifying grants for the city, county, school district, to try to do vehicle replacements and try and alternative fuels to reduce the transport emissions from actual transportation for vehicles within the county. That is probably half of our emissions, it comes from transport on the.
So, you may not know that we did in the last, I guess, year, year and a half? I guess it's just, add a year, right, Margaret, hire a grant administrator? We do have a grant administrator here at the county that may help with those grant applications, so that might be a good, and then I noticed, thank you for sending this, by the way.
You're welcome.
But what is the, this, I noticed that the salary increase from this year to next is like thirty percent. Is that, what is the reason for that?
So, the fiscal year 2024 was only from April through the end of this year, it's not the full year.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just, we're going forward from where we are currently.
Well, that helps, because that was, I just started, you know, I looked, sent you an email yesterday, but you probably didn't get a chance to look at it, so now I'm asking you in person. But thank you for sending this information, so.
You're very welcome.
And I do agree that we should go by the budget year.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we, let me find it, approve the funding of twenty-five thousand dollars for budget year 2023-2024 for.
Twenty twenty-four, actually.
For fiscal year 2024?
Oh, you do go by fiscal year, not budget year, but it's our budget year. So, for the Hood County budget year 2324, which will be your budget year 24, for twenty-five thousand dollars.
I hear a second. Second. Yeah, motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the funding request of twenty-five thousand dollars for the Clean Air Coalition fiscal year 2024, in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Hood County budget of twenty-three twenty-four. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. See you next week, or two weeks.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
She does a good job. Talk about that monitoring, the good thing that was brought up is to set up a monitoring station prior to, between Dallas and Hood County, to get the reading as what it comes from Fort Worth and Dallas and those surrounding counties before it gets into Hood County, so that, we're going to try to get us some relief that way, I know. So, that's why we need the money too, so.
I was looking for the agendas, and the current agendas aren't on your website, so in the minutes.
We've, we've had issues with our, our website administrator.
Okay.
Trying to keep things updated. We do meet the first Wednesday of every month, and it's open to the public, so.
Okay, go ahead, you got to, you got to say something. You've come already down here, missed work.
We are run through the City of Granbury, so when that IT attack hit the City of Granbury, it significantly impacted the Clean Air Coalition.
Okay.
All right. Good deal. Thank you both.
I was going, it just all of a sudden stopped. I was like, here's all these minutes, and then it just stopped. And that answers that question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Ferris.
I decided not to.
Okay, good. Thank, thank you. I knew you had a PhD in clean air too, didn't you? You did not?
No.
Okay. All right. Item number seven, review current status of new Hood County website and take appropriate action to establish a date to direct IT to make Hood County Texas, parentheses, texas.gov, the primary URL implement, and auto redirect to the new site. This will ensure any link that currently goes to Hood County Texas official website will be auto redirected to Hood County Texas, texas.gov, and we got Drew Whitaker here to explain to us why this needs to be happening.
So, well, originally, I was just going to give an update to the court, but I believe this item needs to be tabled. There are a few departments that have not converted over yet, and so we are working with those departments to get that done. Commissioner Samuelson has reached out to me and expressed interest in setting up possibly as some kind of special call meeting to basically go over the new website and to show everyone as the court what the new website will look, look like, and then, of course, get feedback from the court and the public if there needs to be any changes or anything like that before we finally go live.
Yeah, if we have a little bit of time, if, is there anybody over there? Since you're over here.
Ashley's over there, but she doesn't know the new website yet.
Oh, okay, but there's a link on the agenda that she could just click the link.
If you want to try.
So, yes, so the IT department has been working on this to migrate the data and the documents and with all the departments to go to the new URL. There are a few departments that need some more work, and this is the face of Hood County with our community, so we don't want it to be wrong, or have mistakes, or links that don't work. So, we want to be sure this is all smooth and correct, so I think there needs to be a little bit more time and a special call meeting so that the court can see it and, and the public can see it, and there's any other departments that want to double-check what they, what they've done and make sure their, the links aren't dead, or they don't go to that four oh four oh, you've got a dead link, so.
So, you pulling it?
Yeah, but I wanted to show it to y'all, because it's pretty nice.
So, obviously, you can still see in the corner that it is, there is outdated information because we are still working on it with departments.
So, this is what the new.
This is what it will.
Our new homepage will look like, and then it's still got, you know, the links across the top. But at this point in time, I'll, I'll table the item, I'll make a motion to table, and then we can call a special call meeting to review more in depth, so the court can take more time to look at it, because we definitely want our face to the community to work properly.
Okay, a motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to table item number seven.
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number seven is tabled unanimously. All right. All right, item number eight. Discuss and take appropriate action to accept $81,115.08 from excess tax sales into the county budget, either into a special use fund or for general purposes.
So this, this is a second tranche, I guess is the word. The new district clerk has been working really diligently to catch up all the accounts and this is, as I understand it, she was here earlier, but this is the last of the excess tax sales that were backlogged, so to speak. And so this is the amount that came to the county, $81,115.08. So we, as a court, can either put this into a special use fund if anyone has a specific idea what that would be, or ask the auditor to put it into the general purpose.
I think we, this is the second such check that we've got thus far from excess tax funds. Where did you put the last one? General? General, so it should just be put in general. You're the one that takes care of it, so.
Yeah, and if you decide you want to use those funds later on this fiscal, you can allocate those to whatever.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the $81,115.08 from excess tax sales into the county budget into the general purpose, general fund.
Motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to accept the $81,115.08 from the excess tax sales into the county budget into the general purpose fund. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item number nine. Discuss and take action to approve paying off the jailers' comp time through 5624 out of funds available from the deputy line item. Sheriff Deeds.
Judge Commissioners, we've been trying to get people hired and they come and they go. We had one guy last week that started and he was all excited about starting and then I heard he quit the next morning. So people are having to work lots of extra shifts to cover so we can keep our jail standards to that minimum requirement for taking care of the inmates. Some are just flat worn out because of so many hours that they're working. So I'd like to be able to pay off that comp time just for the jailers. It's listed as deputies, but it needs, it's just for the jailers out of that jail budget and get them paid up to that date of that, May the 6th. Everything after that is still, still going and that ought to make a lot of people a little happier. There is money in the budget. The auditor and I discussed this and she came up with that money. Actually, the liability is $85,874.88. And, but she asked that I didn't hire any more people than the ones that we already had kind of approved to start and then we lost one of those. So it doesn't look like we'll be overshooting that until after we get into June. So I would ask that you approve this so we can get those jailers somewhat happy again, so.
I think that's very important to keep the ones that are there, there.
Yeah, they feel like they're working just for nothing, so.
Oh, okay. I hear a motion.
Yes, I move that we approve paying off the jailers' comp time through May the 6th, 2024 out of funds available from the deputy line item.
Second. Yeah, motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to pu, to pay off the jailers' comp time through May the 6th, 2024 out of funds available from the deputy line item. Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is yours again to consider and take appropriate action to promote a detention officer JLR-SP 46,000 to Corporal One, 50,000 effective Monday, May 13, 2024. Yes, Sheriff?
So I, we promoted some people and we're trying to move people around and, and get them took care of. So just ask that you would consider allowing us to do that so we can get those people moved up, that one person, from 46,000 to Corporal One at 50,000.
Okay. And that's the same thing for, 10 and 11 is not redundant. You just have two officers that you want to.
Yes.
To increase that's the same position to the same promotion, right?
Correct.
Let's do both of them together. This is to approve both items number 10 and 11. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve to promote detention officer JLR-SP 46,000 to Corporal One, 50,000, and also promote detention officer JLR-SP 46,000 to Corporal One for 50,000 effective Monday, May 13th for both officers.
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to promote the detention, detention officer JLR-SP 46,000 to Corporal One, 50,000 effective Monday, May 13th, 2024 for two officers in the same place. Second by Commissioner Samuelson for both of those promotions. All those in, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Got both of those, Sheriff.
Thank you very much.
So unanimous, thank you. Okay. Item number 12. Discuss and take appropriate action to adopt a resolution requesting a change to state law to extend duty on striking, parentheses, hit and run requirements to privately maintain roads. Precinct one, that's you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
What do you have there?
Well, the, we had a, an incident where someone came off of the roadway, knocked down a flagpole, tore up some landscaping, the, it was over $1,000 of damage, which is the threshold for a hit and run, and got a conviction on that. And then it was overturned because it was on a privately maintained roadway. So apparently in the, in the court's opinion of this particular legislation, if you do this on the side of privately maintained roadway and tear up somebody's stuff, you just drive off with no penalty. And that does not seem like a very good idea to me. So what we're doing here is, we've got a resolution to ask the legisla, ask our legislators to look into changing the legislation there where it applies to a privately maintained road as well.
Hey, we got one speaker on this, Thomas Mead. Was it your yard they ran into?
No, it's not, actually. At the, I'm a recently retired President CEO of Complantation, which is the largest gated community inside of Hood County. A member of American Bar Association, Section on Civil Rights and Social Justice, and the father of the individual that actually ran through that yard. Okay? So the reason this was overturned was not just because it was on a private road, but it was also because our council, or the county's council tried to homogenize two separate statutes that didn't gel together to create legislation to get this through. But this isn't about me, the personal experience. What it is about is, it is about what's called legislative creep. Are y'all familiar with that term? You take a dog, you put it out in your yard on a hundred-foot chain, every day you go out there and you cut a link. Next thing you know, that dog is five foot from the tie, doesn't know whatever happened because it creeped upon him a little bit of time as we took that chain away. And that's essentially what this is doing, is it's taking away liberties. I can tell you, as a resident of Complantation, as a former president of Complantation, that I, I think all of us know that aside from our salvation given to us by the grace of God, there's nothing we get where we don't give up something. Everything we get, we give. For those of us who move inside this gated community, we know we give up things that we're paying taxes for, for what we get in return. What we get in return is peace and solitude. Okay? Commissioner Samuelson, can you guesstimate how many mailboxes in Complantation get run over on a weekly basis?
Thirty? I don't know.
Bingo. Okay? So if you want to hire 16 more deputies to go out there and work traffic on runover mailboxes, well, you might want to consider then changing it. But the thing is, is in 1947, Senate Bill 172, which was titled a bill, an act regulating traffic upon travel of highways of the state of Texas. Okay? Highways. The definition, dictionary, Supreme Court rulings, appellate court rulings always comes back to public road. That's what a highway is. Okay? So back then, this was actually just an article, okay? This was before 1979 when the traffic code was changed to 550 just for nomenclature and organization. There was actually no change to that law then. Okay? Then, in 2011, there was a change to that statute which included structure. Prior to that, it was just fixture. Okay? So they included structure, that way if you had a house that that was covered because that would have knocked it out as well. In 2017, they simply just added "and" to the verbiage as far as if requested, show driver's license. Okay? Then in 2023 was our last amendment, and this was not an amendment to anything other than just changing wording to be consistent with the rest of the traffic code. And that is where they struck the word accident, replaced it with the word collision. Okay? So the thing is, is this is literally asking the, the state to give a little bit more power to reach a little bit deeper. I know that when I moved in where those gates are, that I gave up stuff. Okay? Prior to living here, when I moved out into county, I knew I didn't have a police department. That was a decision I made. And I feel like almost any individual that buys a $200,000 lot and builds a $2 million house, it probably got the education sense to know that they've given up stuff. In Texas, there's 780 constables, 788 police departments, 254 county sheriff departments, 254 county commissioners courts. And I can tell you that none of them have ever asked for this to be changed because they know that basically they would just be stomping upon the, the rights of their constituents. So I have, I would, I would like to ask that if you can't give a no vote on this, that you consider tabling it, listening to the audio posted on the Second Court of Appeals website on the case in question to which the opinion link is posted, and then make your decision from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Two questions.
Yes.
Tell me your name again.
My name is Thomas Mead, M-E-A-D.
M-E-A-D?
M-E-A-D.
And the statute you said that was just amended, was that 551041?
No, it's 550025.
I mean, I'm scar, sorry, 550.
No, 041 is actually a statute that if an officer observes $1,000 worth of damage, then they can enter private property which is normally assessed by public, such as a parking lot or paid.
That's cool, but they didn't amend that one.
No, there's no need, no need to amend that and they don't go together.
Thank you.
Oh, and answer your question on item three on the agenda, if you look at 26 U.S.C. Section 501, you'll find the reporting for the requirements for the non-profits.
Other comment or question?
Yeah, I would, I would dare say, I would have a reasonable expectation, and I believe most people in here would, that even if I lived on the side of a privately maintained road, if somebody came in and mowed over my mailbox, I would anticipate that they go knock on the door and try to contact that homeowner and say, hey, I just did damage to your, to your mailbox. That, I would do that.
Not if you were drunk, which is probably what happens.
Well, and, and there's a whole story involved in that, too. But I think that there's, there's a reasonable expectation that somebody owns up to the, their mistakes and deals with this thing correctly. And if not, do we really want to just allow that? Is that not a criminal behavior to, to mow over somebody's property to that extent of a damage and not have a hit and run?
To me, this, this falls under the same thing as when your next door, say your next door neighbor's tree falls on your fence. I mean, it's a civil matter. You can take civil action. If, if someone runs over your mailbox in a private gated community, that's a civil matter. And do we want to extend? People move to private gated communities because they're private gated communities. We have a lot of those in Hood County.
Mm-hmm.
And they've been treated as civil matters.
I don't know as though it's, it, so it's not the same as a tree falling over because obviously you know where the tree came from. If somebody runs over your mailbox or your property or hits your car in the driveway and then just drives off, that, I, that, that seems criminal behavior to me. That, to get a ticket for that doesn't seem, doesn't seem way out of line to me, so.
Currently, it's in the statute that it needs to be, it's a highway. And private gated communities are not highways. So it's a civil matter.
Well, and that's, yes, that's, that is where the opinion came down, where the, the discrepancy occurred, is that it's saying that a highway is a publicly maintained and this is a privately maintained. So that's where it crossed the line.
And I've heard from, surprisingly, or not surprisingly, I don't know, I heard from a lot of people after this agenda got posted, that we, you know, what is this about? And what are we trying to do? We live in, in a private gated community for a reason and we don't necessarily want to change that to allow additional restrictions or law enforcement opportunities, I guess, so to speak, in our private gated community. That's why we move there. We, so.
I got, are you, are you through for a minute? So there's a Court of Appeals opinion on, we're talking about a statute here and statutory construction, and they go through the standard of review. And actually, my good friend Dabney Basil wrote the opinion, and I think it's a good opinion. And they examined the statute involved. And they go through the standard of review, they look at the statute, they talk about statutory construction, and they come to the punchline and they talk about it, that five, this is Transportation Code 550.041. And it said it cannot be read to create a criminal offense for failure to report a collision with a structure, fixture, landscaping adjacent to a privately maintained road. So they looked at this statute, they examined it. And there's, let me just read their conclusion, Mr. Basil's, Judge Basil's conclusion. At the bottom, we conclude that 550.041 is unambiguous because there would be a different look at it if it, if they thought it was ambiguous. They say it's not ambiguous. Nothing in its unambiguous language allows a law enforcement offer, officer to decide after the fact that a crime can be charged when there's no legislative enactment that criminalizes this conduct. Thus, because the appellant had no duty to report a collision, which I know that Commissioner Andrews has angst over that, and I get it, I understand. As far as the statute is concerned, there's no infraction. And this resolution, here's my problem with this resolution. We're at, we're a government body asking, this is real, getting real close to taxpayer-funded lobbying, right here in my opinion. This is not our job. If this statute needs to be changed, you need to go down to the legislature when they're in session and ask them to change it. So that's my part on that. Thank you.
That, or contact your representatives now.
Yeah, it just seems like.
Put it on the agenda.
Yeah, it just seems like it's overreached that. Yeah, it just seems like it's overreach that we're asking for, and that's what I heard from the residents in Pecan, was this is overreach into our private gated community, which there are more than just Pecan and my precinct, but those are the main ones that I heard about, heard from.
Want to table this until you do some further research on this?
Well-
Like we vote? Or do you want to vote on it?
I'll throw the motion out there.
All right.
I move that we-
All right, let's hear your motion.
I move that we approve the resolution as presented.
Do a resolution requesting a change to state law to extend the duty to striking or hit-and-run requirements on privately maintained roads?
Yeah, and the resolution requests our legislatures to take up changing state law. It's not changing state law.
Okay, requesting the legislature to, so, we're going to request the legislature to change the state law. Now, that makes, I think that's in accordance with state law, okay? So, motion made by Commissioner Andrews to adopt a resolution requesting the legislature to change the state law to extend the duty on striking or hit-and-run requirements to privately maintained roads. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second? Looks like it fails for lack of a second. Okay, all right. Item number 13. Discuss and take appropriate action to request the county auditor explore the best method to finance a potential jail expansion. Do you want to address that? You're the county auditor, Ms. Matlock. Do you have any suggestions?
I'd be happy to research it and let you know the options for you to decide.
All right. Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
I move that we authorize the county auditor to explore the best methods possible to finance a potential jail expansion.
Do I hear a second?
And report back at a later date.
Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to request the county auditor to explore the best method to finance a potential jail expansion and report back at a later date. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Okay, item number 14. Discuss and take appropriate action to declare DRG Architects LLC to be the most qualified for a jail expansion project based on previous jail experience, previous work with the county, and knowledge of the Hood County Jail. Again, Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, after numerous discussions with DRG Architects LLC, I move that we declare DRG Architects LLC to be the most qualified for a jail expansion project based on previous, their previous jail experience, previous work with the county, and knowledge of Hood County Jail.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Commissioner, okay, the motion made by Commissioner Wilson to declare DRG Architects LLC to be the most qualified for a jail expansion project based on previous jail experience, previous work with the county, and knowledge of the Hood County Jail. Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
I'll say one thing, Judge.
You want to say?
The only thing I want to throw in the middle of this as a potential amendment is if there's a jail expansion. We haven't voted on that yet, but other than that, as far as the Commissioner Wilson's motion, I'm fine with that.
They do-
Let's go ahead and add that, if there is a jail expansion.
Not a problem.
They definitely were much better than the one we had before. The DRG came to the last court, they had a lot of good information, so, I agree. They're the most qualified.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Okay, item number 15. Discuss and take appropriate action to request a fee proposal from DRG LLC. Again.
Again, this is, you know, just the continuation of, you know, going through the process now, and I move that we request a fee proposal from DRG Architects LLC for the proposed jail expansion that has been discussed in the previous court.
I'll second.
Well, this isn't going to, this part here is not going to cost anything. This is just, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, this is just-
This is their schedule.
Request a proposal from them.
Okay.
A motion made by Commissioner Wilson to request a fee proposal for DRG Architects for the proposed jail, if there is one, coming. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Item number 16. Discuss and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign a software services agreement with associated time at a cost not to exceed $32,000 one-time fee, annual software maintenance of $1,400 a month beginning in month two, $16,800 per year, and annual hardware maintenance of $5,000 beginning in year two. First month software and first year of hardware maintenance are included in the one-time fee, expense to be paid from IT hardware slash software budget. This will allow the county treasurer to migrate the current associated time software to a cloud-based hosted solution. Drew Whitaker.
So, to try to make this easy and summarize everything, when we moved to Tyler years ago, two years ago, we were going to use their timekeeping system as well. It was supposed to be a one pane of glass, one easy, simple solution. Well, it's not, and it does not work. So, the current system we have with associated time is end-of-life, end-of-cycle. So, we are on borrowed time-
Borrowed time.
Yes, borrowed time with it. And so, what this would do is, this would move us to the newest associated time to fix this issue. So, that is what is before you today. It is already in our budget. We can, we are going to pay for it, but it is a contract, and we need your signature, Judge.
Yeah, and the next agenda item will also is related to this. Ms. McCoy, do you want to talk about some of the issues that you've had?
Well, it, associated time has actually allowed us to continue to use their product and even-
For several months.
Supported, supported the endeavor without-
Charging us or anything.
Yes.
Because they know the predicament we are in.
Yes.
While you're walking up, I just want to add that I've, we have gone to extreme lengths with Tyler to try to make this work. We've escalated it to the highest levels in Tyler. I asked for an onsite meeting over a month ago, because anytime all of you know that are clients of software, or you sell software, or you own software, you know that when your client has a problem, you go onsite and you do whatever you can to help. We asked for an onsite meeting over a month ago, we got a Zoom call. We asked for another onsite call, we got another Zoom call. So, we are not feeling the dedication and support from Tyler for this particular executime software, and as Leanne can go into the issues, it's mostly the non-standard timekeeping that's not working, which is the entire sheriff's department, so.
So, I would like to proceed with associated time.
Leanne, of course, is chopping at the bits to say something.
She is, I know she wants to talk.
Please, please come up, Ms. Matlock.
Well, I'll just start with associated time. We've had associated time since I began. I've never had any issues with them. Anytime we've had any technical problems, they've answered right away, and like you say, we are on borrowed time. I can't remember when the contract ran out, but they were willing to work with us and help us if we needed in between going with Tyler. They've always been a great help, and I'm looking forward to seeing what they have to offer with the new system, or the new upgraded, migrated to the cloud. Looking forward to that, because it's very, the system right now is very user-friendly, and you know, the department heads have to use that. So, if it's not user-friendly, it's not worth it, in my opinion, but associated time is very user-friendly. So, I think he's wanting to do associated time now, right?
Okay, good.
Do you want me to go ahead and discuss number 17?
Oh, hold it. Mr. Ferris would like to say something here. Let's let him speak, but you're in favor of it, both of you?
Yes, sir.
Well, good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak on this a little bit. First of all, a new timekeeping solution sounds great. I actually looked at it a little bit. Do have some concerns. I want to make sure that you possibly understand them and that kind of stuff. I was looking at the actual proposal, and it said it had biometrics. I believe it said facial recognition, that kind of stuff for timekeeping. My wife was kind of looking at it, too, and, well, she was the controller of a billion, multi-billion dollar company that did facial recognition, TSA pre-check, driver's license, facial recognition, software, hardware, for all kinds of things. And she thought, well, that's a little bit nuts for timekeeping, or for time card keeping, employee entry. And my concern, fairly small, it's not a huge amount of money, but all you really need is a badge to check in, a simple, okay? You're adding a lot of complexity for facial recognition, biometrics, fingerprint, whatever you're doing, that probably isn't necessary for timekeeping. Also, expense, also complexity for reliability. Do you have problems with that? Is the hardware going to be reliable? Is, you know, it's just much more complex and probably overkill. It's also possibly overkill on price. Now, you know, that's more complex, more cost. What are you really getting for that? I do recognize that things are getting commoditized, okay? So, facial recognition is no longer as much of a stretch. I've got it on a cell phone, okay? Is it to that point? Just look at what the difference is if you go with a simpler, maybe more, what I would hope would be a much more reliable entry system for timekeeping only. Now, if you're talking about entry and exit of prisoners in a jail, okay, you got, you got me there. So, just take a look at that a little bit on the level of biometrics you're getting into, and whether it's really necessary, and whether the reliability is really proven or not, okay? Otherwise, I'm for the new timekeeping.
Okay, thank you.
And surprise on Tyler, huh?
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yes, at this time, I'll make a motion to approve the judge, to the county judge to sign the software service agreement with associated time at a cost not to exceed $32,000 one-time fee, annual software maintenance of $1,400 a month beginning in month two, which is $16,800 per year, the annual hardware maintenance of $5,000 beginning in year two, the first month software and first year of hardware maintenance are included in the one-time fee, expense to be paid from IT software budget. This will allow the county treasurer to migrate to the current associated time software to a cloud-based hosted solution.
Second. A motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to authorize the county judge to sign the software service agreement with associated time in accordance with what is stated in the agenda and what she just said, and second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item number 17. Discuss and take appropriate action to instruct the county attorney to notify Tyler Technologies of our intent to discontinue the ongoing project implementation of time and attendant features known as executime, and to pursue offset for payments associated with this project, including hardware, SaaS fees, and consulting time. Good luck with that, but please, Mr. Drew Whitaker-
Well, this is where my knowledge kind of goes away and more math's not, comes into play here. I'm not a lawyer.
Okay.
So, this is, Matt and I, Mr. Mills, our county attorney, and I have been discussing what to do with this as part of 16 and 17. We feel like going to the new software is the best thing for the county, but we have paid Tyler $107,000 over the last three years for executime. That includes the time clocks, that includes the consulting time, that includes $14,000 a year for maintenance. So, we also have other expenses with Tyler, because our other software, other county departments use software. So, at this point in time, it's really up to our county attorney to negotiate offset from ongoing fees. We have bills every month from Tyler, so I'm certain that our county attorney can work out something with Tyler to recoup the taxpayers' $107,000 over three years.
Ms. McCoy, do you anxiously want to add something to this? I see you there.
No, I just wanted to, since Matt won't come up here, just talk about it. When we did start implementing executime, I right away knew that this program would not work, and I actually talked with Commissioner Andrews about it, I did go to Matt Mills about it, and tell him that there was no way that this system would work for us. So, they kind of deterred, well, Andrews did not, but Matt did, kind of deterred me, tried to stay with executime. We're going to put our boots to the ground, we're going to go again. So, we did again, and same issues as we had the very first time. Nothing has came about to fix any of our problems or any of our concerns. Anytime I would email with questions or some things that needed to be tweaked, they never got answered until we were actually on a live call. Now, if Owen emailed, Owen would get a response real quick, but if I emailed and asked for concerns or anything to be fixed, they weren't fixed at all. So, we're still faced with those issues, and like Commissioner Samuelson said, we did have an hour-long conversation addressing the same issues that we addressed the first time, which in turn, we received a 30-minute follow-up call, who said we needed advanced scheduling, which we do not, we've already explored that. And then, to start with the easy departments first, I do not believe starting with the easy departments first is the best solution. Why would you not start with the more complex departments? It's not user-friendly, you can't get reports, you can't print time sheets, it's just, it's not a good system at all. And I believe that Owen believes that when they are more fine-tuned, then maybe we can look at the option of going with them. But as of right now, we have four technical supports, so if we were to have an issue during payroll, what's going to happen if I can't get support to help? We have Somerville County that is, was supposed to go live in January this year, and they still have not gone live, because they had, everybody was punching in, punching out, and all their time disappeared. And they put in tickets, they've been waiting all this time to get a response and to fix the issue, so they have cut it. So, I just do not feel like it is a good choice for Hood County at all, and I hate that this has happened.
I did post on our Texas Association of Counties to all the other commissioners to see if any county had successfully implemented Tyler without manual workarounds, because there are some counties that are small enough that they only have a few people that have difficult schedules, and so those, you know, if there's only two or three, they can implement Tyler and do those by hand, but I haven't received any replies that anybody, maybe people just aren't replying, but I haven't seen any positive replies.
The only, the only positive I've got in the past was from E-Rath, and like I said and told you the other day, the lady that I spoke with, she started when executime was already implemented. the lady that I spoke with, she started when ExecuTime was already in place. So she's been working on it the entire time. When I meet a payroll person from E-Rath County, which two separate departments absolutely hate the ExecuTime. It doesn't pull into, we call it encode Tyler, ERP Pro 10 is what we currently have for our payroll. So it doesn't pull in correctly. So you're having to do a lot of work on top of what, I guess migrates? Is that what the word is? Migrates into our payroll system. Currently, right now, we do have Associated Time already. We do use a biometrics that scans your hand. So Associated Time, what we have right now, I mean, we're printing time sheets, and I'm having to calculate time sheets. We enter it into the payroll system, which is Tyler product. I love, I love our Tyler product as far as the payroll, but ExecuTime is, I don't think it's a good product at all. And I don't believe that our technician, what do you call her? Caitlin? Yeah, the one that's creating the programs for us and fine-tuning everything, she is not ExecuTime. There's no ExecuTime. People dedicated to this product to make this product work. They're all Tyler. So there's just no fine-tuning.
Thank you. We got it.
Do you?
No, we got it. We got it, doesn't work. Mr. Ferris, you want to chime in?
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Yeah, I couldn't resist, yeah, I couldn't resist coming back up for Tyler. You know, back when other problems happened, I mentioned that I would be shocked if there weren't other train wrecks coming. And I understand that there's not the experience with big software products. But everything I see here, every problem I saw in the previous conversion issues first goes back to the contract that was signed. I'm just suggesting, you know, try and, on the next big contracts, you need a whole lot more investment. I mean, it had a great start with the product evaluation because it noted some serious things that could be problems in going to Tyler. But they weren't addressed in the contract, they weren't addressed in the mediation. There were no statements of work. There was no plan for how the work was done. And, you know, the previous timekeeping, that's $28,000. That's a plug-and-go software, okay, and hardware. That one's simple. The Tyler for a mass conversion like that, you need a whole lot more management and background, et cetera. And I had mentioned this to one other person, and I will use his name. You know, I'm happy to talk whenever, you know, if you want to talk about projects and how they should be done and maybe things that could be done. And I do believe that a friend of mine, Richard Hoffs, would be willing to discuss if you've got issues as well because he managed contracts for a little company named Coca-Cola for software development projects. So he's also familiar with contracts. I'm familiar with the development. So just something for the future to keep in mind, all right? I understand the contract was done before anybody knew. I'm not trying to berate. I'm just suggesting foresight next time. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, anyone else?
Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to instruct the county attorney to notify Tyler Technologies of our intent to discontinue the ongoing project implementation of time and attendance features known as ExecuTime and to pursue offset for payments associated with this project, including hardware, SaaS fees, and consulting time.
A motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to instruct the county attorney to notify Tyler Technologies of our intent to discontinue the ongoing project implementation of time and attendance feature known as Executive Time and to pursue offset for payments associated with this project, including hardware, SaaS fees, and consulting time. Second by? Thank you, Jack Wilson. Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Item number 18. Okay, we're going to take a?
Going to take a break?
10-minute break.
Okay.
Item number 18, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the revisions to the employee code of conduct policy. HR Director, Ms. Welber.
Good morning. You've all received recommended revisions. This is your policy. It's up to you how you want to proceed. These recommendations were mentioned to me, the three I've added. So I included them in the policy. But of course, it's up to you if you would like to revise.
Okay. I have no questions, I think it. Do you, anybody else have any questions?
I have one question on the second page.
Yes, ma'am.
The bullet that starts once the elected official and/or department head have reviewed.
There. The complaint?
Yes. I would suggest adding back in that all disciplinary action will be in writing and at the request of the supervisor placed in the employee's permanent file. If there's some behavior that's egregious enough that it violates the code of conduct, it needs to be documented and maintained. And that is, to me, is people management 101. It's, needs to be there.
Okay, sure, I can add that.
Anything else? I know that that one revision that you could make?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make the motion that we adopt the employee code of conduct policy with the revision to put back in the last sentence of that, well, third bullet point on the second page. All disciplinary actions will be in writing and will be placed in the employee's permanent personal file.
I couldn't hear that. Do you know what it is, what the revision is?
All disciplinary action will be in writing and at the supervisor's request will be placed in the employee's personnel file. Yes.
Okay. With that addendum, to approve the revisions to the code of conduct then. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Welber.
Thank you.
You did a great job on that, okay?
Thank you.
The last item is to discuss and take appropriate action to sign the resolution denouncing changes to Title IX announced by the Biden administration. Greg Harrell, has he, have we outlasted Greg Harrell?
I guess we did.
He was here, I know, but I think he's left, so.
All right, I'll, that's the only person that signed up? Okay.
He was the only person to sign up to speak.
So I've been following the Independent Women's Network since all of this started back several years ago with biological men competing in women and girls' sports. My youngest daughter played Division I softball at North Texas State University. And my seven-year-old granddaughter is already a heck of a softball player. If it weren't for Title IX back in 1972, we would likely not have had our hometown nationally famous coach, Lita Andrews, or our gold medalist swimmer, hometown hero Dana Volner. Softball legend and Olympian from Katy, Texas, Kat Osterman, and so many more. Because of the phenom Iowa's, Iowa's Caitlin Clark, she made, sorry, she made national history this year. NC, NCAA Women's Tournament was the most highly-watched tournament of men and women in NCAA history and basketball history. In fact, more people watched the NCAA Women's Final Game than the men's. That was the 18.9 million viewers. And the men's drew 14.8 million viewers, according to Nielsen. These women would not have had this opportunity without Title IX. The Biden administration is going beyond their constitutional authority and the meaning of Title IX to destroy women's sports by allowing men to compete in women's sports. This is dangerous. And it has already caused physical injury to young women and girls and destroyed opportunities for high school and collegiate athletes. It is just a biological fact that women's and men's bodies are designed differently by our creator. We need to send a strong message to the Biden administration and to the administration of our schools in the state of Texas and in our county that this is wrong. And we will not allow the Biden administration to put girls in danger or destroy girls' sports in Hood County. Just yesterday, I received communication from our representative Shelby Slosson. Valerie Swanson and a group of 17 undersigned members and 15 nominees of this Texas House of Representatives also wrote a letter to President Biden denouncing the changes that he has overreached and tried to do to change Title IX. They also wrote a letter to Governor Abbott praising him for his public denouncement of the changes for Title IX. So before I go through the resolution, does any other commissioner or the judge have anything they would like to add?
Yes. Okay. So I want to read an excerpt from the Biden, excuse me, not Biden, anything but Biden, the letter that Governor Abbott sent to Biden. "I am instructing the Texas Education Agency to ignore your illegal dictate. Your rewrite of Title IX not only exceeds your constitutional authority, but it also tramples laws that I signed in to protect the integrity of women's sports by prohibiting men from competing against female athletes. Texas will fight to protect those laws and to deny your abuse of authority." And Title IX was enacted in 1972 and amended later, I think in '80. And it's based on the fundamental premise of two sexes, two. And Paxton's, actually, General Paxton has sued President Biden. And in his lawsuit, if you look at his paragraph number 28 and 9 on page eight of his lawsuit, he says, "Title IX states that no person in the U.S. shall, on the basis of sex, which means male or female, be excluded from participation and be denied the benefits of or be subjected to discrimination under the, any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance." All of which Commissioner Samuelson alluded to and gave you a rundown of women who have exceeded and excelled. For the entire, this is paragraph 29, "For the entire half-century since its enactment, both the department and the recipients," Department of Education is who the bureaucracy is involved. "The Department of Education and recipients have understood that Title IX's prohibition on sex discrimination to refer to a person's biological sex." With that as a backdrop, so Governor Abbott has sent a letter saying, "We're not going to do it." And General Paxton has filed a lawsuit against Biden. And that's the specific on Title IX. But the general is the, we are becoming an administrative state. This is my general lecture on. What we have is, we have fundamentally left constitutional law where legislature enacts legislation and the judicial tries to interpret it, and the executive does what the executive does. And what we've done over the last 50, 60, 80 years is create bureaucracies where the legislature passes a law, like Title IX, and then they ship it over to the agency to make all the rules. It's totally, absolutely, completely unrepresentation. There's no representation there. It's assault on constitutional principles. It's a, it's complete administrative state that we have really no say in. We have no vote with what the administration. This is an executive request sent to the Department of Education. Just, I decide I'm going to make an order, and here I go. I'm going to make one. It undermines the rule of law. It violates the separation of powers. It's fundamentally contrary to the idea of a Republican form of government and the principle that all laws should and must be passed by elected officials who are accountable to you voters. One thing we can do with, under this Department of Education, and then I'll stop, is quit taking federal money. If we, if our schools will quit taking federal money, then they don't have to abide by any of this. That's a big if. That's what I got, thank you.
Any further discussion or comment? If not, do I hear a motion? This should be approved quickly and unanimously, I think. Do I hear a motion?
Do you want me to read through it? Do you want me to read through the resolution?
No, just go ahead, make the motion. We all know what it is.
Okay.
And we're all opposed to it, okay? So this will be done with pretty quickly. Even Dr. Granik is opposed to this, aren't you, Dr. Granik?
No, actually.
No, actually? That rail will be waiting outside for you with those tarred feathers. Go the opposite way, Dr. Granik, okay? All right.
I'm not going to go through the wherethes, but I do want to go through the last part. Now let it hereby be resolved if you want to skip up to that. "The Hood County Commissioners Court denounces the recent changes to Title IX regulations proposed by the Biden administration expressing deep concern over the potential negative impact to the Hood County students and community. And that the Hood County Commissioners Court urges the Biden administration to reconsider these changes and engage in meaningful dialogue with stakeholders, including educators, administrators, parents, and students to ensure that any modifications to Title IX uphold the fundamental rights and protection of all students. And that the Commissioners Court, Hood County Commissioners Court, calls on the Granbury, Toller, and Lipan ISDs to reaffirm their commitment to maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students, free from discrimination, harassment, and violence. And that the Hood County Commissioners Court calls on Granbury, Toller, and Lipan ISDs to consider finding alternatives to accepting federal funds as to cease seeking and accepting financial and other assistance from the federal government. And that the Hood County Commissioners Court calls on the Granbury, Toller, and Lipan ISDs to join in this resolution. And that copies of this resolution be transmitted to the TEA Commissioner Morath, the Texas State Board of Education, to the superintendents and the president of the board of the trustees of Granbury, Toller, and Lipan ISD, and as well as other relevant stakeholders to underscore the importance of this matter to the Hood County community and to seek support for our efforts to ensure these changes are challenged at the highest level. Dated this 14th day of May, 2024."
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of signing the resolution denouncing changes to Title X announced by the Biden administration, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, that includes the agenda. Now we go to the consent agenda. Does any commission wish to pull or discuss anything that's? go to the consent agenda. Does any commission wish to pull or discuss anything that's on the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
A motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so Mr. Clint Head Development, receive update on the construction plan for Sunset Ridge.
This agenda item is to update the court and let them know the construction plans for Sunset Ridge in precinct four has been approved by the reviewing engineering staff. This is always done prior to presenting the developer's agreement and considering the final plat, which is the next agenda item. There's no action needed to be taken on this item. It's done just to have it on record.
Okay, so we just, no actions is being made, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Next, I'm discussing, consider the performance bond, accepting the developments, developers' letter of agreement, approving the final plat of the Sunset Ridge.
The concept plan for this subdivision was approved May 11, 2021 by the Commissioners Court, and the preliminary plat was approved on December 14, 2021. Took a while to get the drainage and everything worked out on the construction plan, so now we're back with the final plat and a variance and a developer's agreement. This property is located in undeveloped, it's in the Road Corridor District in Precinct Four. The subdivision will be creating six lots that will be over two acres in size out of the Daniel Pope Survey Abstract Number 460. These proposed lots will be served by private wells and onsite sewage facilities, and is proposing to construct 722 linear feet of asphalt streets. We have a variance to consider today. The variance is for the performance bond in Section Two, Section 7.3. Although construction was done prior to court approval, this is a unique situation. The county has not received any labs or testing on the subgrade of the bases as of yet, and staff recommends approving this variance for the performance bond with conditions that when all labs have been completed and passed, and the construction of the street approved, the developer will provide a two-year maintenance bond or a letter of credit to court to consider accepting. Staff has reviewed this final plat. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends accepting the developer's agreement, approving the variance to Section 7.3 with those conditions, and approval of the final plat is presented.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, sir. I'll make the motion that we approve the developer's letter of agreement and a final plat of Sunset Ridge, under the condition that we receive approval of lab reports verifying the densities as proposed and as required, and also that a merit, a maintenance bond be brought in.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's my motion.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second to Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, then, all right. Lastly, you've got this thing here, public hearing to discuss and consider for the replat of South Bend Edition Lot 4R. So at this time, at 46 minutes till noon, we are journeying into a public hearing. Yes, sir?
This replat is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct Three, and it's the combination, combining of lots four and five of South Bend Edition, creating Lot 4R, which will be a 3.472-acre lot that will be served by AMED water and onsite sewage facilities. Staff has reviewed this replat, and all comments have been addressed.
Okay. Any questions or comments in this public hearing? If not, at 12:44, we are convening back into Commissioners Court. And do I hear a motion?
As I move that we approve the replat of South Bend Edition Lot 4R.
A motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the replat of South Bend Edition Lot 4R.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Financial, the illustrious Stephanie Matlock.
Hello. We have $547,149.31 of invoices, and my office has reviewed them all and recommends payment.
Okay. Any questions or comments to our auditor? If not, do I hear a motion?
As I move that we pay the bills for the period of April 16, 2024, through May 7, 2024, in the amount of $547,149.31.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the payment of invoices for the period April 16, 2024, through May 7, 2024, in the amount of $547,149.31, as approved by the county auditor, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion or comment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And at this time, I'm proud to announce, this meeting is adjourned.